I forgot to ask, Michael, are we ready? We ready to rock and roll? Austin, I can't see Austin. We're ready to go, alright. Our 7:30 has arrived, I'd like to call to order this study session for January 7th, 2020 of District 116. Roll call, please.
Member Carter.
Here.
Member Exum.
Here.
Member Patton.
Here.
Member Plasky.
Here.
Member Fisher is here, Vice President Hall.
Here.
And President Demmett.
Here. We do have a quorum present for this evening. I have one addition to this evening's agenda in that we will have a quick exec session for purposes of property. Are there any other modifications or corrections to this evening's agenda? Seeing none, we'll go ahead with citizen's statement. If there's any citizen that wishes to address the board this evening, please fill out a golden rod sheet and turn it into our recording secretary. We don't have many in the audience tonight, so while I'm waiting to see if anyone wishes to step forward, I'd like to recognize Austin Pontius and Michael Tassin for running the cameras for us tonight, so people at home can see us. Anyone wish to address the board? Anyone wish to address the board? I do this three times. Anyone wish to address the board? Old style from old procedures that I learned a long time ago. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. So as I said, we'll have a call for an exec session this evening, there'll be no action following that, just for purposes of property. We are ready for a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Some move.
Move to the second at all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side? Motion is carried. We are now ready for our administrative reports, the first of those is minority enrichment presentation.
So we'll bring up Ms. Campbell, the Minority Enrichment Coordinator, former Vanna High School.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Good evening.
I'm gonna step back, I don't wanna be on the mic, I'm not feeling that well tonight.
Oh.
Thank you for the opportunity, for allowing me to be here tonight to present, can I move to the screen? Okay. To present to you, we are in the month here gonna be taking our third trip to HBCU in North Carolina, and we are asking that you help us go. So I have a presentation to tell you a little bit about where we're going, what we need, and what we're gonna be doing while we're there. Okay, there we go. Okay, we're gonna be leaving on Sunday, February 23rd through 27th, we're gonna stay for four days. We're gonna get there by school bus, taking it to Midway Airport, flying out Southwest Airlines, and we're gonna get there and get vans from Enterprise. That's how we'll be driving, I'm sorry, that's how people will be transporting around, you guys know I get nervous starting talking in front of you, okay. It's gonna be a total of 28 people, 24 students, 18 female and 6 males, and 4 chaperones, 2 female and 2 male. We will be visiting Bennett College, which is an all-girl college, Duke University, which is not a HBCU, but it will be great to visit while we're there, North Carolina A&amp;T, North Carolina Central, North Carolina State, Shaw University, St. Augustine University, University of North Carolina in Chapel Hill, University of North Carolina Greensboro. We will visit 3 schools a day, just so you know. We also have a fine dining experience that we go and we allow the students to dress up and kinda get to the idea of going to an upscale restaurant with waiters and white table, white table linen cloths and servers. So it's an experience to teach them etiquette and how to act outside of their usual environment. Also, we're gonna be going to Frankie's Fun Park, it's like an indoor state fair, if you will, with activities to do. And they don't have to participate, but that's something that we're gonna do together as a group. We're gonna take them to the mall, and we're also gonna sightsee with a North Central alum, Ms. Motley, one of our counselors at the school, who graduated from there, and she's gonna, kinda gonna take us on a more personal tour. Now, why do we go? Thanks for asking. I think it's very important to plant seeds as young as we can. We know that high school is technically right around the corner before going to college, but to allow students to have the opportunity to get somewhere outside their environment and see what's out there, give them a chance to see how they can develop a future outside of Illinois, to give them an opportunity to think about how they can succeed in life. This is what I wanna do, I wanna plant those seeds for our students. I also wanna be an aid to our parents who can't send their students by themselves. I mean, send them students, take them students with them. It costs a lot to take you and your family to a trip, paying for hotel and food for everybody. So to be able to send your child somewhere with someone that you trust, to have this experience and just pay one time, I think that's an awesome opportunity. First-time flyers and the first time being outside of a region for students. So far, we've had over half our students being able to fly for the first time. This is very interesting on the flight, actually, for a lot of our students who fly for the first time, but to be able to experience that with them is something that I would have for me forever, you know? My kids who come back to see me to say that they took their first flight with me, and I provided the opportunity for them. And to be outside of Illinois, I wanna say 75% of my students had not been outside of the state of Illinois, and this was a big, big opportunity for them to get outside of the city, see what's, see what's out there, and see how they can become involved in traveling and things of that nature. Of course, insights to their future plans, how they want to achieve their future goals, broaden their perspectives in lives, and unforgettable experiences, traveling, bonding, food, other people, dorm life, we have 6 students per room, we'll get to that, but we'll have 6 students per room, 2 per bed, and you're not able to pick who you sit, who you sleep with, or who you stay with. So it's a real opportunity to get to know how you are housed when you go to a real university. Okay, the total cost for the trip is $10,063.20. Our flights are 46, well, I'm just gonna round it off, if you don't mind. 4,600, which pretty much comes out to $192.63 per person. The chaperones have their own room, and then the students share a room. 6 girls, 6 girls per room, 6 boys per room, for 3 female and 1 male. And if we have any issues, we'll deal with that accordingly. But that comes out to $146.67 per person. Excuse me one moment. You got any wire? Please, thank you. In transportation, while we're in North Carolina, I told you the vans before, each van totals $255, which totals altogether $1,200. And gas, I included, is $55 per person. And a trip hoodie is included every time we go, we have either a t-shirt or hoodie, thank you very much. We have a t-shirt or hoodie, and it's gonna be $25. So all of this together is $419.30 per person, which I rounded to $420. And what have we done to raise money? Glad you're asking questions. Recently, we had a Chipotle fundraiser, however, we did not raise enough money because we didn't generate enough funds for the time slot from 4 to 8. Culvers, they had, they donated $300 for our students. We have a popcorn fundraiser coming up this month, and we're also gonna sell our hoodies and t-shirts. This is a design here that our student designed, Roxanne Isafa, who's an active African-American club member. And then, how can you help? Glad you asked. I did a breakdown of if you decide to donate these amounts of how much it is per person, so donating $1,000 would decrease the cost per person by approximately $45. Donating $2,000 would decrease the cost per student by $85. Donating $3,000 would decrease the cost per student by $125. Or if you decide to just pay for us to attend our fine dining experience at about $50 per person, that is $1,400. And if you pay for it all, of course, we will forever be grateful. Whatever is decided, we're asking that you pay the chaperone's cost of $200 per person as we are working around the clock from the time we get there to the time we leave. And these are a couple testimonials from our students that have gone in the past. I won't read them all in depth, but I'll highlight some of the student statements. Nymir, who's a senior, said, "On this trip, I found one of my dream colleges," which is Howard University. Anthony Sibley, a senior, says, "The trip has been a good guiding experience to gain more knowledge about the college experience. Also, great bonding time with peers who go to your school." Ashanti Thomas, a senior, said, "It's great seeing people who look like you achieving great things." Cameron Emery, I know everyone knows Cameron. Cameron said, "Being on the college campus of Clark's Atlanta University made me feel like I was home. I felt the love of my fellow brothers and sisters." And Amira Rodriguez said, "Before visiting schools, I didn't feel like I would fit in because I am not black. But after being exposed to them, I realized I can see myself attending several of those schools. I am grateful for the lifelong experience." That's pretty much it, I can go on and on about how we could use your help or how you could donate to make this trip a great opportunity, but I'm just grateful to be able to take the students every year. I came up with the opportunity 2 years ago when we went to Atlanta. Last year, we went to Baltimore, where we got snowed out for one school, but we visited 5 schools. The students got to see the area, they loved it, I hear so many students say, "I wanna do this, I've never been outside of this place, I've never traveled here." And to be able to hear that, that I had the opportunity to do it is mind-blowing, so to be able to send them and kinda take the cost off the parents would be great, I mean, we're doing fundraising, we're gonna continue to do fundraising, we're gonna continue to do what we can to raise the money, but I just thought it would be good if I can speak to the board about what I'm really doing and my vision and how I want to continue to be great. Anybody have any questions?
Board members, questions?
What's the age, is there a limit, or is it only upperclassmen who get to go, or any?
No, it's freshmen through senior.
So what, where's the interest, do you think, mostly, which students seem to be most interested?
Mostly juniors, well, in the past, mostly juniors. This time, I have a lot of sophomores going, yeah. I believe because my other students are leaving out, and they see the, they see that the seniors have come, the ones who first started are now seniors, they see the experience that they have had, and they, everybody kinda wants to jump on board, and I open it to the African-American club first. If I am not able to fulfill those spots, then I open it up to who's ever interested at that point.
Do you see greater interest now in kids who've gone to, like, do the college application process and the financial aid process and all that that goes along with being a junior and a senior? You know, I mean, are these kids who may not have been thinking about applying to colleges?
Oh, absolutely.
And now you're seeing the counselors, Ms. Motley, and people are saying, hey, they're coming and talking about the applications and stuff.
I wanted to kinda go and draw out statistics and things, that, you know, numbers, but I didn't wanna be too long before you, but my first year, 80% of my students enrolled in school. 4 of them HBCUs, and 2, 2 students, they went to the Army and the Navy. Last year, just 2 to 3 went to college, but they were, they, only, only 3 seniors from last year. So I have more juniors this year, and they're, well, seniors, they're now becoming seniors, and they're going through the college application process, and I've already had 2 students who get accepted to the schools they were going to, North Central and St., no, Shaw University. He just got accepted, Cameron, he's, oh, sorry, Cam. He just got accepted today. He's so excited, so he's waiting on a couple more acceptances, but it's good to see that I've been there from that beginning of that process, all the way now to my students who are graduating, and those who've come back to say, "Thank you for taking me on this trip, thank you for broadening my horizon on my perspectives and my goals in life," because I would've never thought to leave the area, we have a great school here. But sometimes you have to step outside of the bubble, look inside to see how you can fix your life, and and then come back and be an asset to your community, so I'm always encouraging my students to go away.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have a practical question, I assume we're being asked as individuals versus as a central office, so, so the practical question is, how would we make a donation?
So it's my understanding, we had a, another group come before you, was that last year, Lori? Last year?
Yeah.
Yes, and so I, I believe the board made individual donations for that group to go to New York for their performance.
Right, that's right, for the...
So, yes, so it would be the same.
Okay.
Yes, so whatever you, but we would want to do.
The board did make a donation.
The district also, the board approved the district, I think it paid 6,000 or 7,000, and then the board members also contributed on top of that.
Right, exactly, exactly.
But they still have fundraisers going?
Yes.
So, I mean, who, who would we make the check out to and who would we send it to by, and by what?
So...
You can make it out to the school, the African-American club. We are leaving February 23rd.
I was just gonna say, yeah.
The hotel basically takes the money out when we arrive, so if you need up to that date, that'll be great.
Are you gonna take a P card?
I do take a P card, and Diane usually gives us a kind of a cushion in case of any emergency, so if, you know, you don't donate by that time, anything that you donate after could be backdated, and I can give parents back money or, you know, however that process may go.
So that was my other question, what if you don't raise enough by February, will, are all 24 students able to go?
All 24 students, all 24 students have a plan of action, let's say that. In the past, when we have not reached our goal by a certain time, we just, I send out emails, you know, we have students who need help, who need more assistance, is there anybody who can help? And then, when we come back, we still try to do other fundraisers to make up things that we didn't didn't have before we left.
So what's your drop dead date, Cece, like, to have the 4/20 for all 24 students?
February 7.
February 7, okay.
And anything that you guys do, it will be, you know, subtracted amongst
Gotcha.
the whole group, unless you say, okay, I want it to go to this, and, you know, you'll see everything that I do with my receipts and things of that nature.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I definitely would be in support of even the district using district funds, I mean, I think we paid 6,000 or 7,000 for the choir to go from the district, and then also donated as individuals, this is an educational trip. I know some of the kids in this group are what we consider more at risk. And this is certainly an opportunity for them to look at colleges and universities and picture themselves on those campuses and going to those schools and finding out how that process works, and I certainly would be remiss if we had a student who could not go because of $400 on this type of trip, so.
And they are actively fundraising, I know a couple even went out and got seasonal Christmas jobs at the mall to help, you know, decrease their costs.
And they were trying to snow, due to the snow, we haven't had any snow. This group definitely, that, that came in this year, they're very active, I mean, they're texting me all the time, Christmas break, I was, I'm still sick, but "Cece, we need to talk to you because we have these type of plans," and I'm like, I can't think right now, but I'm excited to have those kinda kids to be so active and be transparent with me about what, things that they wanna do, and I'm just trying to make it happen one moment at a time.
This begs the question that we need to get back to a discussion that we had several years ago where we need to rather than respond to this on an ad hoc basis, is to have an annual budget. And when district's gonna be involved in potentially a source of funds that is identified to support the budget. I know it's... Every time somebody comes in front of us, it is something that I think we need to participate in, and just like tonight, I think we need to participate in this.
Thank you.
But we need to we, yeah, we need to do it in a certain way so that not every student club at the high school and middle school thinks that, well... We're playing favorites, or, you know, well, somebody knows how to get in front of the board, so they get response, and our faculty doesn't know how to do it, and so we don't. I'm just looking for some way to bring some rationality to it, and it may be a time for us as a board then to set what our priorities are for the, what kind of student group we wanna participate in, because I have to admit, it's been more than musical groups and and things like that that have been in front of us as opposed to maybe some other well-deserving initiatives that require some of our best thinking as well. I'd encourage, maybe you and Carol and people to get together and think about this. One thing that comes to my mind is the interest that's earned by the student trustee, the student activity fund that continues to accumulate.
And then you guys can share with us, you know, kind of your priorities, you know, I, I think academics is a huge one, and I know we've seen groups from the arts come forward, so.
And, and other funds that we use for the African-American club are for like NAPIT and Open Mic Night, just to try to have some foundational money to start up fundraisers. Sometimes the students will kinda pay dues, like $5 a person to try to get some startup money, but MEP as a whole, I mean, a budget would be great, you know, I've said that before, just yearly to see what I can do with, or I don't, I don't know what I can ask for, but I'm just asking at this point.
Gotta ask.
So, again, just thank you, and if you guys have any questions, you need more information about where we're going, in more detail after each day of what we're doing, I have all that information, even past trips, if you need that, to see what I have.
I think some concept of how much you've already raised, how much you expect to have,
Okay.
and what your shortfall is,
Okay.
is probably at, at this point in time when we're only just a few weeks away from actually departing, you should have an, I hope there's an idea. I know you've got the popcorn fundraiser to go yet, so you don't know what exactly you're gonna be, but but some concept about that would be helpful to me, I may be the only one that feels that, that thinks that way, but
I can let you know what's in our account.
I, I know, like, when choir came in front of us, they had raised X amount, and they had a gap of this amount, and they were trying to close the gap, and, and so we were trying to work on the gap, of course, that was a very expensive trip, much more expensive than this per person. But, that's...
I would like to know the number of children you have currently signed up for this.
Oh, I have 24.
You have all 24?
28, I'm sorry, 28.
28 and close to chaperones.
28 people, yeah. Okay.
And the reason why I did the $200 per chaperone is just so we can have our own room privacy purposes, I didn't wanna add that cost to make it go over a certain amount, so that's why I was asking if you
Right, I wasn't sure if you had all 24, 'cause I know you had said something about possibly if you didn't, opening it up to other clubs and people, so I wasn't sure exactly how many you had.
Yeah, I'm past that point to where I didn't have everybody in the club entrance and I opened up, and then I still have students come in from time to time to say, is there any more room left? Maybe in the future, I can get more.
How exactly did you choose North Carolina to go to?
We just kinda brainstormed. More students start talking about wanting to go to warmer places, and not like North Carolina's so warm, but that was, well, it's warmer, and then Ms. Motley, who's an alum of North Carolina Central, was talking about the area, so many schools, to be able to hit so many schools.
Right.
Last year was 5, the year before that was 5, but it was like 3 HBC, HBCUs and 2 PWIs, so yeah, 9 schools would be the most that we hit.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you guys.
Thank you, Cece.
Without pointing fingers, this is a place where maybe the NAACP and organizations like that could make a significant difference as well.
Absolutely.
I don't wanna put
Well, you just did.
You just did, but we can help you with that.
Okay, all good?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
So while Cece's...
Next is continuous improvement plans.
Yes, so we're gonna invite Ms. Lloyd up while Lori switches out the PowerPoint. Oh, that's right, you have her handouts.
Right.
So we've seen the other Empower, oh, and it looks like she's not feeling well either.
Oh, no.
Yes. We've seen the other Empower schools come before us, as you know, we've talked a lot about the Summit of Designations, and this is Thomas Paine's first time before us because they are newly designated school, and you have her summary there, and she's going to kinda walk through the goals that they've worked on, they've worked very closely with Ms. Norton on this, so we'll turn it over to Ms. Lloyd.
Thank you. I appreciate having this time to talk to you a little bit about what our team has crafted in regards to helping us reach our goals for this school year. So one of our goals, we have 2 goals, one is a literacy goal, and the other is a an attendance goal. So our first goal is students who are not currently at grade level for grades 2nd through 5th will increase their reading proficiency by 7 percentage points, and that will be for this year and each year for the next 2 consecutive years. And so, we're gonna do this by the following ways. All teachers are going to be adhering to the expectations established by the collaborative framework regarding instruction and assessment, that includes our daily 5 model structure for the reading block itself, running records, administering those on a regular basis, guided reading groups, having students practice sight words, and then words their way, which is more like of a spelling inventory to identify phonics that students know. And then supporting students from, support from our literacy interventionists as well. The second part of this goal will, is be, and teachers are going to be receiving training and analyzing and applying their running record data. Our second goal, which is the attendance goal, for this goal, we plan to decrease the percentage of chronic absenteeism from 30% by a 3 percentage points this year and for the next 2 consecutive years. And this is gonna occur through a creation of an attendance improvement plan that will implement an attendance improvement plan to include strategies and activities to decrease chronic absenteeism. And so rather than going through each of the and explaining what we currently do, I wanna talk to you a little bit about, or highlight what the team has planned to help us reach the goals outlined, okay? And so for our literacy goal, we have all certified staff who teach reading will receive training and analyzing and applying their running record data for all students through the support of our instructional coach, and so this will allow teachers to provide feedback, goal-setting with students based on formative assessments and reading. This allows students to really know where their deficit areas are and to promote them, or get them engaged in the process of increasing their reading skills. The other thing that we're gonna do is we have a few more I wanna highlight, and this is outside of our current practices. We're gonna be using formative assessments to create sight words and fluency phrases for students to practice. So students need to be able to recognize words quickly and automatically in order to apply that in their reading, to become better readers, to obtain comprehension. The third thing that we're going to do is supplement instruction to provide additional individualized instructions to students who are reading below grade level, and this is through an extended day, um, practice model. The next thing that we, I would like to highlight is that teachers will, um, be adding additional reading materials for parents to support literacy at home through, uh, RAS Kids, Reading A to Z, and home-based, um, competitions and incentives, and that's going to be supported through our FACE team. Moving on to our, um, chronic absenteeism or attendance goal, we're going to focus on the awareness, an awareness campaign and a recognition for, um, attendance itself. And so student, I mean, teachers are going to, this is all certified staff will participate in this, and they will actively support the attendance improvement plan as evidenced by our, um, employee participation in, in activities and strategies. This plan includes a school-wide recognition and celebration for all students in classrooms based on regular school attendance. And so the additional information that you have, um, towards the back of your document just kind of breaks down what I shared with you. The only additional thing that we needed to add to our, um, plan was I, I neglected to include our, um, student engagement advocate who is going to be helping and supporting in the attendance, um, goal itself. So, that's it. Do you have any questions?
Questions to Doris?
I just wanted to ask about the extended day learning opportunities, um, and, and how that works. Do student, do, do you need to get permission from the students' families in order for those kids, because I presume you mean they stay beyond the, the end of the school day, and so do you need to get permission for those students to participate, and do you usually get that permission? And then is it the same teachers who they've been working with during the school day who also provide that extended day learning?
Support, yeah. Um, yes, we will need to get permission from parents, and, um, and, and, and part of it is because of transportation. Um, transportation is usually, if we were to have to provide bus services for students, so we would need parents to come pick them up or someone to arrange transportation. Um, so, yes, it would be parent permission, and as far as, um, the teachers who will be working with them, members of the team have volunteered to do that, so we would have to, um, we would have to hire staff who, certified staff who'd be willing to do that. It would not be the same classroom teachers who do, it may not be, let me just say that, because some of the classroom teachers would volunteer and, and be willing to do that or take it as a paid stipend, so it could vary.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Lloyd.
Uh, we have no policy review this evening, we have no action items. Uh, we do have three study topics this evening, uh, and so the first one of these is the CU One-to-One Mentoring Program, uh, update. So, Thomas, are you going to introduce?
Well, coming on up. So, Tom Halli, our Director of Community Mentoring, Volunteering, um, he's, you have a paper in front of you that has some numbers that Tom's going to just give us a very brief update, um, to highlight January, which is mentoring month, but then he has a special guest that is going to talk a little bit more.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Tom Halli, Director of Mentoring and Community Involvement for the Urbana School District. January is National Mentoring Month. Uh, many of us know the great value in mentoring. As indicated on the National Mentoring Partnership web, website, mentoring at its core guarantees young people that there is someone who cares about them, assures them that they are not alone in dealing with day-to-day challenges, and makes them feel like they matter. Research confirms that quality mentoring relationships have powerful, positive effects on young people in a variety of personal, academic, and professional situations. Ultimately, mentoring connects a young person to personal growth and development and social and economic opportunity. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for your support of the CU One-to-One Mentoring Program. As you know, CU One-to-One has been in the Urbana School District since nineteen ninety-four. Mentors meet weekly with students during the school day on school grounds, providing support and building relationships. As of 2020, each qualifying CU One-to-One mentee who graduates from high school will receive up to six thousand dollars in scholarship funds paid over two years. This past fall, the Mentoring Scholarship Foundation paid out thirty thousand dollars in scholarships. One of our priorities during National Mentoring Month is to recruit more mentors. The demand is always high. We have two final opportunities for individuals to be trained as mentors during this school year, January thirtieth and February twelfth are our final training dates for this academic year. The sign you see here is, uh, part of our recruitment effort. You may see this sign on billboards around town. Uh, we will also be marketing CU One-to-One in a variety of other ways during the coming weeks. Another priority for us this month is to thank our current mentors. Among other things, we will be hosting a breakfast for mentors on January twenty-eighth. The theme of the breakfast this year is what it means to mentor. This evening, I'd like to introduce you to Brian Fulton. Brian is a current mentor at Urbana Middle School, and he also serves on the CU One-to-One Scholarship Board. Brian will share a few thoughts with you on what it means to mentor.
Hi, uh, thank you, Tom, and, uh, thank you, board members, for having me here tonight. Uh, as Tom said, my name is Brian Fulton. I am an administrator at the University of Illinois, a resident of Monticello, a husband to a beautiful woman, and a father to two wonderful children. And since 2016, I have been a mentor to Kedrick, a seventh grader at Urbana Middle School. I started as a mentor four years ago because I was seeking to put some action behind my social consciousness, consciousness for marginalized populations in our world, especially children. I heard an interview of rapper and activist Killer Mike, in which he described the best way for a privileged white male such as myself to be an ally was to be a mentor. The next day, I saw that a friend had become a coordinator, uh, in the CU One-to-One Mentor Program. Uncertain if this was a moment of divine intervention or just a fortuitous coincidence, I elected to reach out to my friend and ask how I could help. Uh, the rest, as they say, is, uh, history. So, uh, what does it mean to mentor for me? Um, and honestly, that's, it's not a very easy question, uh, to answer. Um, I hope that mentoring means I'm providing advice and guidance to a child that may have never considered a post-secondary education a possibility, and helping to develop the tools to make it a reality. I hope mentoring means providing a consistent, positive interaction with an adult, uh, for a child that likely finds those experiences to be rare. Uh, with my work on the scholarship board as well as mentoring Kedrick, I hope that mentoring means I'm making a difference in the lives of children that need it. In reality, those are probably just excuses to feed my personal ego. Uh, what mentoring really means to me is an opportunity every week to have lunch with my friend. It means catching up on the weekend sporting news, convincing a young man that Odell Beckham Jr. could not hold a candle to Jerry Rice, learning the trials and travails of modern middle, of the modern middle school student, and more often than I'd like to admit, losing to a young man one-quarter of my age in a heated game of chess. Certainly, there are times in which immediate success is recognizable, like the day Michael Jeffries and I regaled these with trivia and facts about the African-American experience during Black History Month, and they met our stories with genuine interest and excitement. But in general, impact is hard to measure in the short term. However, in the arc of my years with Kedrick, I hope with all of my heart, a real difference is made. And definitely, over the twenty-five years and hundreds of students and mentors that have participated in this program, the CU One-to-One Mentor Program has had a positive impact on the students, the schools, and the community. We thank you for your support. Do you guys have any questions for us?
Questions?
What year was your, um, child when you started mentoring? What grade?
He was in fourth grade.
Fourth grade?
Yes.
Thanks. Did you say how many students you have in the program, do you know?
Uh, approximately...
Or approximately?
Approximately, uh, two hundred and thirty or so in Urbana, close to six twenty-five between the two school districts.
Okay. And how, how young do you start?
We start in third grade.
Third grade.
Um, the, the flyer that we got with the community involvement update, is that separate to this presentation? Is that in addition to? Because I was looking at the numbers, and when I first looked at it before you came up to speak, I was thinking this was general volunteers, but is this just mentoring volunteers?
That's correct. The, um, we have listed over on the right side, mentors are part of the overall numbers that you're looking at, so this community involvement update includes mentors and tutors and all the volunteers who come into our schools.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you. And actually, I wanted to ask, I, I always appreciate getting that update, because I think you give it to us something like this every year. Um, and my, my question just has to do with the spread in numbers of volunteers across the schools. Um, I mean, it just seems more dramatic this year than, although my memory could be wrong on this account, but, um, you know, I'm just looking at the high and the low, I mean, we've got a spread of a hundred and forty-four volunteers at one school and as low as seven in, in a couple others. And, and so, is, is there, you know, what accounts for that spread? Are there some schools that just get more volunteers because they're the home of the dual-language programs, for example, or they're just within walking distance of the university, and so students are more apt to, you know, is there any logical reason for such a spread?
I think the reasons that you mentioned are both accurate. Um, in addition to that, it sometimes depends, for example, I'm at the middle school, and we had a large program called Make More Music, where a number of volunteers were coming in weekly to work with students in music. They had some staffing changes, and they have not continued this year, so sometimes those large programs, either coming or going, can, uh, account for some of that change as well.
Okay, I, I mean, and do we, and I guess I mean, not the royal we, but you...
Yeah.
...strive to sort of balance that? I mean, when you have some schools that are, you know, in, you know, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty, and others who have seven and nine, um...
Yeah.
Do, do you try and manipulate that in some fashion?
Absolutely. We, we work together, uh, we have a mentor coordinator in all of our buildings, and we work together, um, to, uh, you know, provide a balance in mentors hopefully between sites and also volunteers. Um, another, uh, factor that, that we've noticed that comes into account here is when we have staffing changes ourselves, there can be a, a time where numbers fluctuate as a result of a new coordinator coming in, and then sometimes we'll see the numbers shift, and then over the course of maybe two or three years, that will change again. So, it's not surprising that we see some up and down. Historically, that's been the case, um, for, um, for years.
I see, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Anyth, anybody else? As a board member that was here when we started this, it's good to see that it's still going strong and still, um, still, still great. Uh, this all started from, uh, bringing a, a person in from Norwalk, Connecticut, uh, to a meeting, uh, at Parkland College, and it was one of the few first things, that, uh, Wright Street was invisible. It was done across district lines, one of the, one of the first programs, uh, of this nature that we attempted to do, uh, with, with the whole community, um, and, um, I, it's just great to see it continuing to succeed. Um, the experience you're having with your young man, um, I think there's probably now hundreds of people in this community that can talk about the same type of experience, so it's, it's, uh, it's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
If it's, if it's all right, I would like to say, um, and while I appreciate your thanks, um, I'll, none of this would be possible if it wasn't for Tom, uh, right here. He really puts his heart and soul, uh, into this work, and he does a great job, and we as, as volunteers are very fortunate to have somebody like Tom...
Good.
...uh, helping us to, to be engaged in the district in this fashion.
Good.
Thanks, guys.
And it's Lauren Smith on the other side of Wright Street that works with Unit Four.
Yes.
Uh, so I know that you and, you and Lauren work closely together on all this, and...
Absolutely.
Uh, it's, it's, it is, it is great. It's good that the foundation, the Scholarship Foundation is succeeding as well.
It is a, a strong collaborative effort, absolutely.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is, uh, new legislation as of January first, twenty twenty, that we need to...
Yes, that is me, so I'm going to invite Susan up. Um, I'm going to just walk us through a few. Oh, yes, you, I'll let her introduce herself.
Well, I, I know most everyone in here. I'm Susan Nicholas, I'm one of the attorneys for the Board of Education. I'm from Robyn Schwartz and the Champagne Office, and I'm, I'm apparently backing up on new legislation.
No, well, no, you're just kind of coming in case they ask.
All right, all right.
So, she's just, she's just coming and getting ready.
So, softballs, softballs.
Yes, softballs. All right, so Sue, yes, Susan is my backup. So, as you guys know, Susan's going to talk about the legalization of, and, and we've all followed that very closely in the news, watching the lines, um, in our community, um, at, at some of our, uh, local dispensaries, so Susan's going to share a little bit of the background with that, but before we get to that, we are, we do have some, um, specific, uh, legislation that I just wanted to highlight a little bit because some of it does, uh, impact us as a district. Um, there were others. I sent you the whole, um, list of all the new changes, uh, for January one, um, but I'm just going to highlight those that are most relevant to us as a school district. So the first is most relevant to you all, um, as, uh, school board members, so effective January one, um, Pritzker signed a bill into law that under, um, you previously had forty-five days to fill a vacancy, um, that has been changed now that we're able to, uh, extend that out to sixty days to appoint a new member. Um, next is, uh, under the hiring and licensure developments, um, Carol and I have been, uh, we had a meeting with First Student today. So as the Cannabis Control Act, uh, has come to light, there's been a lot of discussion around, um, how this will impact, um, school bus drivers and, and other disqualifying offenses related to school bus, um, uh, misdemeanors and things that our, our drivers might be involved in. So, um, the high, and I should have said this, so you guys have a highlighted copy of this, because some of them are kind of lengthy, and I'm just going to highlight, uh, just focus on the highlighted areas. Um, so this new school bus driver disqualifying offense, um, provides that applicants cannot be convicted of committing or attempting to commit the following offenses, so they're listed here, solicitation of murder, sexual abuse of a child, um, anything related to being a sexual predator, aggravated battery, uh, use of, uh, controlled substance or cannabis offense. Um, our, our, uh, First Student has really, is really strict, so they, they've already been following these, uh, prior to this law coming into effect, um, and they randomly will, uh, be testing their drivers, that's something they've already been doing, um, so there's no change there, I just wanted to highlight it because now it is officially a, uh, law. We've all been following the minimum wage, uh, piece of, uh, the legislation that, um, went into effect actually February nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. The change, um, that we have before us is the law increases penalties for violations of the minimum ma, wage law. This doesn't impact us much because we're already above the minimum wage, um, allocation as it, as it grows out over the next few years. National Board Certification incentives. So again, the Illinois Teaching Excellence, Excellence Program provides, um, incentives, and we had our National Board teachers here, um, in our last session, so we were able to congratulate the people who had, uh, retaken, and, um, we had some new teachers who were newly certified. So this, um, incentive, incentivizes two thousand dollars toward application or retake fees, or up to three thousand, um, per hour CBA, we already provide the two thousand, so that is, is currently CBA language for us, so I just wanted to highlight that that is there. Um, we... We also have candidate cohort facilitators. You met one at the last meeting. Beth Mears is one of those people. So she's also compensated for the work that she does through the district already. Mental health training, so school mental health training. The Illinois School Code requires in-service training for licensed school employees who work K-12 at least every two years to help them identify the warning signs of mental illness. So as of January 1, the state is identifying the Illinois Mental Health First Aid Training Program as a way to provide that training. Todd and I are working on, we've been providing this training in collaboration with Unit Four for the last few years. We had a certified trainer here in the district who recently left and went to another district. So we're going to work with trying to get another, train the trainer model and bring that back so we can offer this. I've been through it. We have had a lot of other people in the district who have had the mental health first aid training. So we'll try to assess where we are and kind of audit the people who have it currently and then come up with a plan to be able to provide. It's about a six-hour training that can be done, you know, a couple three-hour sessions or a full session. So we're going to talk a little bit more about how we can provide this service to our staff and those who might be interested. So that is something we are going to kind of work to develop a plan for. The next several are related to sexual harassment. So the first is the Sexual Harassment Victim Representation Act. And this is strictly related to union representatives. This prevents conflicts that might result from a victim and a perpetrator who are both union members making allegations against one another. So we'll have, we'll work with UEA to make sure that they're aware of this. But the union must designate separate representatives to represent the victim and the alleged perpetrator if this were to happen, where we have two members making allegations to each other. The next is the Illinois Human Rights Act Amendments. This provides, clarifies that unlawful discrimination of harassment includes discrimination based on perceived protected categories, not just actual protected categories. In addition, employers may be liable for harassment against consultants or contractors, not just for harassment against employees. So this also means if we bring in someone to work on our roof or someone who's in our building doing asbestos or an educational consultant that we might bring in, if they're inappropriate with any of our staff members, then we could be held liable for that. So that's something that we'll have to, we already background check everyone, but you know, we'll have to take all of those allegations very seriously moving forward. A second part to this is that employers must provide annual training using the Illinois Department of Human Rights Model Training Program or we're allowed to set our own training program. The Illinois Department of Human Rights, I know Susan's been checking, they have not developed that training yet. We've been asking and when it is made public to us, we'll look at it and compare it to what we're currently doing. This year, we worked with UEA and HR to develop new modules. Well, we didn't develop them personally, but we implemented a new program called Safe Schools, which provides online, web-based modules that would meet this requirement. We have several. We have one for mandated reporting and ethics and all kinds of, you know, it's about 40, how many hours is Angie, 44 hours? 44 hours of training that we provided to all staff regardless of your position. So our certified teachers had specific videos, facilities, maintenance, custodian. Custodians watch their videos before winter break together. And then they have quizzes that they take. So our current training that we're using would satisfy the minimum requirement set by IDHR. And then when they come out with theirs, we'll compare the two to make sure that we're meeting the mandate. The program that we are using, Safe Schools, does allow us the ability to change things and make it more personal and make it our own. So we could always incorporate different things from the IDHR if we're not meeting that mandate when we get that training. And the next is the State Employees and Officials Ethics Act. So technically, you guys are only elected officials, but, so this is, this does include school districts. So it says that we must amend its sexual harassment policy to provide a mechanism for reporting and independent review of allegations made against one elected official by another. Victims Economic Security Act. So this allows an employee to take unpaid leave, which is the most important part of that, for certain reasons. If he or she was the victim of domestic violence, sexual violence, general violence, which those have already been set, this language adds now this unpaid leave applies to gender violence as well. And then it goes on to talk about the length of the time in leave, 12 months. Depending, for us, because of the size of our district, they can take an up to 12-month unpaid leave. The last in this section is Training for Mandated Reporters. Again, our Safe Schools modules provide that free web-based training to our staff. And we actually, coming in new, as a new administrative team, felt it very important that all of our buildings receive a face-to-face training this year. So at our first Staff Development Day, we had several people from DCFS come and they went to every campus and did the face-to-face, more in-depth mandated reporting training at each site. So this change allows multiple mandated reporters in the same workplace who share a reasonable cause to believe that a child has been abused to designate one person to make a single report. In the past, as mandated reporters, we've all been mandated to make that report. So in a building, if, for example, three or four different people knew of an abuse toward a child, all three or four of those people would have to make the call. This law changes that where they could designate one person to do that. So the principal might be the person to do that, the social worker might be the person to do that. So we no longer have to have every single person who knows about it make a phone call to DCFS. They also require mandated reporters to complete an initial training within the first three months of the school year, which we satisfied that. We did ours in September, as well as every three years after. And we're going to make sure that our mandated reporting training is every year. And then the cannabis legalization is next. So Susan's going to talk a lot about that, so I'm going to skip that one. And then we have the cleanup bill. She'll talk about that a little bit. And the last one, I think, that was most relevant to us was restrooms. So the gender-neutral signage for single occupancy restrooms. Each single occupancy restroom shall be outfitted with exterior signage that marks the restroom as a restroom and does not indicate a specific gender. So we have several staff restrooms and faculty restrooms across the district where there was a men's room next to a women's restroom. And so we, Randy has already gone around and kind of audited where we are, what we, what we need to do to comply with this because this does apply to all existing places where we have public accommodations, not just those altered or constructed in the future. So I think previously we've been fine because any time we renovated a building or we remodeled a building, we made sure that the signage was gender-neutral because it was new, right? This is saying now we need to go back to what we currently have and also make it non-gender-specific. And Randy's already looked at some signage and found some all-gender signs. Some, you know, I think we're going to lean more toward just having signage that just says restroom, you know, without a, and that'll help us on cost too a little bit. Some of these signs were pretty, like $80 a sign. So we're going to try to, because right now, what did you say we're up to Randy? About 40? 40 to 50 signs that we'll have to remove and replace because of this, so. Questions? I know I went through that really fast, but I knew you had it in writing. So if you have any specific questions?
Any questions, board members? I think we're ready to move on.
Oh, no, Susan's got the best topic tonight. Or at least the hot topic in our community right now.
I don't want anyone to be concerned by the number of slides. I go fast.
Yes, she does.
But if you have a question, feel free to stop me. I'm sure you all know cannabis is legal for recreational use in the state of Illinois effective January 1 and business is booming. I saw a report about how much was sold over the first few days to the point that at least one dispensary in Urbana had to cut back sales for recreational use because the law provides that medical cannabis preempts the sale of recreational cannabis. And there's not enough to go around. So it's selling like hotcakes. Well, generally, what does the act permit? Now recreational use for adults over the age of 21 who are residents of the state of Illinois, subject to restrictions. Adult residents can possess up to 30 grams, which is about an ounce of cannabis flour, five grams of concentrator, 500 milligrams of THC that's in a cannabis-infused product. Non-residents have slightly lower limitations on what they can have, but since we all live in the state of Illinois, this is what you are allowed to do if you are so inclined. It authorizes the state to issue a limited number of licenses for cultivators, processors, and retail dispensaries and the charge of an excise tax on the retail sale of marijuana products. If you've been watching social media at all, we've all seen the pictures, the receipts, where people went in and made that purchase on January 1, where they bought $200 of cannabis and paid $91 in taxes. It is an extremely high tax rate. It's tiered based on the type of product that you're purchasing. And I mean, really, it's ending up to be about a third of the total purchase price. Qualifying medical marijuana patients ages 21 and older can grow up to five cannabis plants in their home without having to have a cultivation center license or a craft growers license. And they can possess cannabis in greater amounts than other Illinois residents. Medical cannabis is an entirely different process. It's been in existence for a while now. It requires getting certain types of certificates from your physician that then go to the state. And then you have the qualified patient and possibly a qualified caregiver. And this provision applies only to those people. And frankly, depending on the condition, even carrying four, five cannabis plants would be more than what a lot of those patients could handle. So that doesn't seem like that big of a give under the act. It also allows the expungement through the governor's clemency process for prior convictions of less than 30 grams. I think we saw the governor signed thousands of pardons over the last couple of weeks related to prior cannabis convictions. It's been keeping state's attorney's offices very busy and basically eliminates any prior misdemeanor offense for possession. So what are the limitations? There are still penalties. You cannot have cannabis on a school bus unless it's permitted for a qualifying patient under Ashley's law, which we'll talk about in a little more detail later. Nothing in the act requires you to let anybody consume, possess, or use cannabis within your residence or business or anything like that. You still have the right to tell people they may not use cannabis in your home. Nobody can be under the influence so that it would constitute negligence, professional malpractice, or professional misconduct. And it does not prevent the imposition of civil, criminal, or other penalties for using cannabis on a school bus on the grounds of any preschool, primary, or secondary school unless qualified under Ashley's law. In a motor vehicle, there are very specific restrictions on how you can possess cannabis in a vehicle or in any public place or in close physical proximity to anyone under 21 years of age unless they are a registered medical cannabis patient under Ashley's law. The part that you're probably concerned about first and foremost, though, are the workplace considerations. What impact does this law have on you and your rights as the employer? Cannabis usage and possession is still illegal under federal law. And that's both medically and recreationally. The Congress took away the sword to enforce the medical cannabis provision by not funding the Department of Justice to address that. So while it's still illegal, nothing's really been done about it because as we know, funding tends to drive what actions are taken. But it is still very much illegal under federal law and recreational cannabis hasn't seen much sway in the federal area. Employer obligations under the Department of Transportation are unchanged. You cannot use cannabis recreationally, even if it's legal in the state of Illinois, if you're subject to the Department of Transportation regulations. The act cannot be construed as interfering with or impacting an employer's compliance with federal or state law or cause it to lose federal or state funding. As a general matter, federal law is going to preempt state law. And when push comes to shove, if somebody may lose federal funding, they are allowed to ignore the provisions of this act. It is a long act. It's 552 pages long, but it does have specific provisions related to employment and employer liability. Illinois probably has the strongest employer protections of any state that has legalized recreational cannabis usage. Workplace protections that are provided. This act specifically affirmed the employer's right to adopt and maintain a drug-free workplace or policies concerning drug use as long as it is not applied in a discriminatory manner. That's really not any different than any kind of rule or policy you have. You cannot apply it discriminatorily, but you can still have it. You can prohibit employees from being under the influence of cannabis in the workplace or while they're on-call. Because on-call has so many different meanings under so many different employers, the statute actually defined it as an employee scheduled to be on standby with at least 24 hours' notice. It affirms the employer's right to discipline an employee, including dismissal for violation of its work-plus-drug policy. So you have not lost that right. But what about impairment in the workplace? This actually is much more complex than I think people actually foresaw. An employee can be considered impaired by cannabis if the employer has good faithfulness that the employee was under the influence of cannabis and manifest specific articulable symptoms while working that either decrease or lessen the employee's performance of duties or the tasks of his position. So it's two-pronged. And one of the most important factors here is that your management, your administrators, people who supervise are going to have to be trained in recognizing the symptoms of being under the influence of cannabis. Please do not take this as the training. These are just examples. Employee speech patterns have changed. Slurring or talking slower, talking faster, anything like that. Sexuality issues, agility problems, coordination issues, a change in demeanor. They've either become far more aggressive or far more laid back. Irrational or unusual behavior, negligence or carelessness in operating equipment, a blatant disregard for the safety of others, or an action that results in serious damage to property or equipment disruption or production or carelessness that results in an injury. You'll notice that a lot of these are very similar to what you look for to see if an employee is under the influence of alcohol. They, while they portray differently, it's the same types of things that your administration and supervisory staff should be looking for.
So Susan, this would be a good place to interject. So we've had this conversation with Dennis and Susan and we're actively trying to find a trainer that we can bring in to provide a, you know, basically the characteristics and the symptoms that Susan just listed. How they, what are some little quick tests or quick look-fours that they may- that they may be able to use on a daily basis? So I have a contact who we're also trying to come to bring to our Winter Institute on February 14. Susan and Dennis are coming back to talk to administrators and give them a similar presentation, a little more nitty-gritty for them, as well as for our teachers. Angie sent from HR a really nice letter after the first to let some of our USD staff, people in the audience, start laughing, but we sent a very nice letter to staff to say we are still a drug-free workplace and that while marijuana might be legal, it is still illegal to be impaired at work. But she said it in a very nice way. Yes. So we are going to train administrators. We have already been working on presentations for the February 14 Winter Institute to provide information to staff, also to more information to administrators.
And one of the primary differences here, I talked about how a lot of these identifiers that you're looking at are similar to what you see when someone's under the influence of alcohol. But here's a primary difference, that we actually have an effective test that's been recognized by courts for not only if someone is under the influence of alcohol, but at what level they are under the influence of alcohol. I think everyone knows if you're over the level of .08 blood alcohol concentration, you're under the influence of alcohol, and too impaired to drive a car or operate a vehicle. There is no parallel test for cannabis. The current testing for cannabis basically shows if it's in your system or if it's not. There is no scale for if somebody is impaired. And the other thing is it stays in a system for quite a bit longer than alcohol. So a positive test, while it would clearly reflect that somebody has consumed cannabis in some manner or another, doesn't say when they did, if they're under the influence of it. And so just testing by itself, except for in those very narrow categories where use of cannabis is completely prohibited, doesn't really prove anything. It could very well just prove that somebody, at least in the state of Illinois, legally used cannabis recreationally. There are several groups that are working on a test that would more align with the way we test alcohol. It does not exist yet. So the word of caution here is a test is not sufficient unless it's absolutely prohibited. There is a requirement in the act that an employer has to provide any employee subject to discipline for being under the influence of cannabis due process. This is nothing new for you. You offer due process to all of your employees when they're subject to discipline. But it does have the additional requirement that the employer has to afford the employee a reasonable opportunity to contest the basis of the determination of impairment of being under the influence. So basically, they should be given the opportunity to say, "The symptoms that you were describing do not reflect that I was under the influence of cannabis." I think what this shows, if you really think about how this is going to play out, these are going to be difficult to prove. You know, unless someone has, you know, smoking marijuana cigarette in their pocket and they absolutely reek of it and they appear to be under the influence, these are going to be very difficult to establish. Employers should, I said this already, be wary of just using the drug tests. Reliance of symptoms of impairment that we just discussed by trained supervisors, and again, training is critical here, is the recommended approach to make the determination if an employee is under the influence. There are several positions of employment that can never lawfully use cannabis, on or off duty. If you have a school bus driver's permit or a commercial's driver's license, you may not ever recreationally use cannabis. Law enforcement personnel are also prohibited under the act, and we believe that includes your school resource officers because they are sworn officers. The Illinois Right to Privacy Act was amended when this act was implemented to include language that prohibits employers from discriminating against any individual for lawful off-duty use of cannabis. But it also gave some limitations on lawsuits, which are helpful and do protect the employers. You can still subject an employer applicant to reasonable drug or alcohol tests under the employer's policy. Again, remember, it cannot be discriminatorily applied. There was also a trailer bill that was signed December 6. I anticipate there will be more trailer bills because as long as this act was, as it's rolling out, we're seeing a lot of holes. That added protection for employees who withdraw a job offer based on a failed drug test. If you have a zero-tolerance policy and they test positive, that would not be discriminatory with a trailer bill. You can still discipline an employee on a good faith belief that the employee used, possessed, was impaired or under the influence in the workplace. You are not liable for an injury to a third party by someone who was under the influence unless you knew or had reason to know that an employee was impaired. Again, this is going to go back to how important it is that your supervisory staff is trained. If you have somebody that's walking around, reeks of marijuana, is clearly high as a kite, and then gets in a car accident, you may have a problem with the "had reason to know" element of that. So the training is not just critical from the "can they get in trouble?" perspective. It's also in making sure that you can maintain the statutory protection. So what do you want to do? You want to review your existing drug testing policies and procedures, train your supervisors and managers to know the requirements of the act and how to recognize the symptoms, develop procedures for implementing discipline. You guys already have procedures in place that follow regularly, but you need to make sure that people who have the authority to impose discipline are aware of the requirements that go along with this. Be aware of possible bargaining implications related to policy or procedural changes. For your contractual employees, you do have drug testing provisions, and those, if there are changes, are going to have to be negotiated. So we will talk very briefly about Ashley's law. I think the last time I was here talking to you, I was talking to you about Ashley's law, and they changed the law since I talked to you. It was initially written so that boards had discretion if they wanted to adopt it or not. And what happened was a whole bunch of school districts didn't adopt it. They didn't want to deal with it. They didn't want to have to deal with issues of possible funding loss or having cannabis in the schools. And so there was a huge number of districts that were like, "No," and just declined to adopt those provisions. And we were one of them. And so the legislature decided, "No, we're not happy with that approach." So now you have to adopt the provisions. And they put a few protections in in a different way, but it's not optional the way it was before. So Ashley's law permits parents, guardians, and caregivers to administer medical cannabis to your qualifying students, and those are the ones that have been recognized under the Illinois cannabis, medical cannabis laws, to receive it on school premises and school buses. Under Ashley's law, the district, public school, charter school, non-public schools must authorize parents, guardians, or individuals who are registered with the Department of Public Health as a caregiver for a registered qualifying patient to administer medical cannabis-infused products. To be clear, that does not include smokable products. There are several ways that cannabis is infused into products. Smoking is not one that's allowed within the schools. Again, the qualifying patient is the person who's been diagnosed by a physician with a debilitating condition, has gone through the process to be a qualified recipient. Cannabis-infused products, foods, oils, ointments, I've heard of gummy bears.
Cookies, brownies.
Yes, and all of those types of things that contain usable cannabis, but it cannot be smoked. Administration of the student on a school premises or on a school bus is permitted as long as both the student and the parent guardian or the other caregiver have been issued the registry identification cards. Did I go backwards? I did. And then after administering the cannabis-infused product, it must be removed from the school premises or the school bus. They tweaked this a little bit. Administration of cannabis cannot create a disruption of the school's educational environment or expose the product to other students. So while one student may have a cannabis brownie, they cannot bring them for the whole class. You can't have a disruption of that nature. The school district can't discipline or deny a student from attending school who has administered medical cannabis or an infused product by the parent or caretaker. You can't authorize the use of medical cannabis if the school district would lose federal funding. And that is a change from what was before could lose federal funding. That one letter makes a huge amount of difference because you can no longer use that as your basis for not doing it unless you are truly at risk. To my knowledge, no district that has adopted the Ashley's law policy has been threatened with using federal funding, but we never know what happens every day. So school staff cannot be required to administer a medical cannabis-infused product to a qualifying student. You cannot force any employee to do it. You have to adopt the policy requirements. But the other side of the changes was that administrators, if they are willing to administer, are now able to do so under Ashley's law. While you can't force a principal or a superintendent or any other administrator to do so, if they're willing to do so, you cannot punish them for it.
What about nurses? I know there was a webinar, nurse, was that today? I sent her something to... Okay.
Well, nurses fall under an interesting, different category in that their licensure is completely regulated by a different area of the state. And I have had issues in the past with nurses refusing to do certain practices or administer certain procedures or medications because it's not in compliance with nursing protocols. I have not heard yet what the nurse's position on this is, and I have a feeling it's going to vary district to district and person to person. Because nursing is technically regulated by the state, they have a lot more latitude on that, but it is still illegal federally. I think they're kind of in that same overarching concern of, "I'm still breaking a federal law." And it's really going to depend nurse to nurse what's going to happen. Now, Ashley's law allows the school nurse to administer on school premises, at an activity, before or after normal activities, or on a bus. But if they are to be administered at school, they have to be stored in the nurse's office. Students, even students who are allowed to self-administer, can't keep them in their locker or in their pockets. They need to be locked up with the other controlled substances that are frequently found in nurses' offices. There is a required training by the Illinois State Board of Education in consultation with the Department of Public Health for administrators who will be administering medical cannabis. It's not together yet, so even though the law has gone into effect, this is an area where it hasn't quite caught up yet. And that training has to be done prior to being able to administer. It does, however, also provide liability limitations. It amends the Medical Cannabis Act or the Combustion and Use of Medical Cannabis Pilot Program Act that school nurses and administrators cannot be criminally prosecuted. And keep in mind, that's under the state of Illinois, not necessarily federally, for administering or helping a student self-administer cannabis-infused products. You can, but do not have to, authorize self-administration for qualifying students, but if you do that, it has to be in the presence of the nurse or an administrator. And again, you have to have all the information that you would otherwise have to have. A copy of the prescription, the protocols for administering it, the registry identification card of a student, the parent or caregiver's registration card. There are a lot of hoops that people have to go to before they're even eligible to walk in and buy medical cannabis and before they're able to bring it to you and say, "You have to administer this." And they have to be kept on file in the school nurse's office. You can't discipline a student who has cannabis under Ashley's law. I think that would be self-evident. You don't discipline any other student that has a controlled substance that's prescribed and kept at the nurse's office. You also have to have a mechanism for telling parents how to notify the school or school district of the need to administer medical cannabis to a student and the documentation that's required for the district to be able to do it. Presumably, that will go in a handbook or however else you do those required notices. If a student need arises, you need to have parameters for administration through a student plan that discusses time, location, and how the administration will take place. So it's really no different than administration of any other medicine that's kept in the possession of the nurse. Long-term medication therapy students, you need a new medication authorization each year. And in the event a medication dosage changes, the parent or guardian has to submit a new written order from the physician, and that order has to be attached and kept with the medication. So I know I flew through it.
I have a question.
Okay.
I was just curious. I know there's certain laws about having... Is there certain rules about putting a dispensary too close to a school?
Well, it's interesting because you have rules like that for alcohol and the sale of alcohol. And that's usually controlled by zoning. That did not exist in the initial act. I've heard that there are trailer bills about that because people don't necessarily want a marijuana dispensary right across the street from an elementary school.
Right.
But typically, that is handled by the zoning at this point of the municipality.
Okay, thank you.
I did want to say one quick thing. I know Susan talked a lot about Ashley's law, but you also have our policy in front of you, our drug and alcohol-free workplace policy, newly revised from press, just so you had that as well.
Other questions of Susan?
Susan, I was just wondering, way back when you were talking about workplace considerations and the kind of challenge between, you know, by still being illegal under federal law, and you just made reference to the act shall not be construed as interfering with or impacting an employer's compliance with federal or state law or cause it to lose federal or state funding. I mean, can you give an example of, I mean, where that might happen? I mean, that we might, I mean, I know you said you don't have, that hasn't happened to your knowledge, but...
And I view Ashley's law as a little bit different from the employment side because they very clearly carved some things out on the employment side. The school bus drivers, the law enforcement officers, the commercial driver's licenses. And we have not seen, at least, you know, against the states that have already legalized recreational use and especially aggressive federal presence. And so it's hard to give an example because we haven't seen it happen. That said, it's unpredictable. We know that it's not likely to happen anytime soon on the medical side because they don't have any money to do it. That's not the case on the recreational side. And it's not unusual, depending on what's being sold or transferred because it's really the sales that the federal government tended, or huge amounts of possession, that the federal government would get involved, going over state lines, things like that. I don't know of a situation where it's come up that the federal government has threatened to take away someone's federal funding. I'm sure it will happen somewhere, and it will probably be based on a very poor decision that somebody made. But until then, it's just a guess.
Thanks.
Other questions of Susan?
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
We have no call for, we're moving on. That's the end of our study topics. We have no call for future special or executive meetings other than the one immediately after the meeting tonight. Superintendent's report. Superintendent's report.
So Lori's pulling that up for us right now, and, wait, all right. As you all know, we have Martin Luther King Celebration Weekend coming, so I, Lori's going to click to, so if you want to click on the link, Lori, I didn't, yeah, that one, yep. So I know you can't read all of this, but on, I better pull it up too because I'm not going to be able to read it from there.
The 17th, there's an annual.
Thank you, Lori. So I'll, I'll provide you all with the link, but on Friday, the 17th, is the county celebration, which is held at Vineyard Church. They're going to be recognizing, and I have the names of some people, I don't know how many of you, I know I go every year, I've seen some of you there. So this year's 2020 award recipients are Pastor Ricky Parks, winner of the Doris Hoskins Prestigious Community Service Award, Austin's Place, winner of the James Burgess Jr., and Susan Freiberg Humanitarian Award, and Nathaniel Dixon and New American Welcome Center, winners of the Dr. Martin Luther King Outstanding Achievement Award. The guest speaker is Dr. Sampson, so that is all happening on Friday night. Sunday evening is the 35th Annual Service of Celebration at Cranor. I do have the name, we'll go back to that in a minute. We have the names of the student scholarship recipients, so we'll announce those in just a second. On Monday is the Unity Breakfast, 35th Annual Unity Breakfast, and that is at Vineyard Church, 8:30 to 11:00 a.m. Also on Monday is the Afternoon of Service. I will be working with Sam Smith and Alicia Trezise because the Interact Club will be participating. I am a newly inducted member of the Rotary Club as of December, I don't remember the date, before winter break. So, you know, I'll be working with Sam and Alicia to get you more information about the Afternoon of Service on Monday, January 20th. And that is it. And the rest of it, I think those were the main things I wanted to highlight, but the rest of it, you can get through the University of Illinois link. The theme this year is Leaders Serve and Are Not Silent. So our award winners, there are 11 students this year. Urbana has a different Sage. This is a female, yes, this is Sage Williams. So we have five students from Urbana, Sage Williams, Aleah Coleman, Corinne Combe, Alana Bailey, and Violet Clement. And I also listed the Centennial and Central students. I'll let Unifor read their names, but those are, those are our five scholarship recipients, so we're really excited. And again, that is Sunday evening at Cranor, so those students will receive their scholarship awards. So congratulations to all 11 of those high school students. And then next is national mentoring. So Tom mentioned this, and I'm going to make sure Brian gets these, but we have, I Am a Mentor Day is tomorrow, so I am a mentor, but I didn't want to steal Brian's thunder when he was here, so I am a mentor of a ninth grader who, I've been mentoring her since third grade when she was a student at King, and she moved to Champaign this year. So all these years, I've been driving back to mentor her here at Urbana Middle School. Now I drive to Centennial to see her. I know her, her mom is actively trying to move back to Urbana. So tomorrow is I Am a Mentor Day, and they are asking that, this is the kind of logo that they're asking people to post on social media and post pictures, and they're asking mentors to talk about the roles that, that they play in the lives of their mentees. So that is tomorrow. Tom talked about the Mentor Breakfast, and of course, all of you all are invited to, you know, encourage and support our mentors at Stone Creek Church Tuesday, January 28th. I'll be there. Dr. Zola and I both, I think I'm doing the welcome and Dr. Zola maybe is doing the closing, so we'll be there to kind of recognize the mentors that day.
Do you have to sing with her?
No, she sings, I don't sing. I support her singing, yes. And then Tom talked about Thank Your Mentor Day on Thursday, January 30th. So all mentors receive a Mentor Benefit Card, and there are several businesses that provide discounts to mentors throughout the day. I don't know if you guys knew that, but, so mentors have the special card that they can go around in the community. Any students that are watching can thank their mentor and use this hashtag, #ThankYourMentor, and post some pictures there. And then as a district, as a thank you on behalf of the board and administration, I'll make sure Brian gets his, he left tonight. I'm going, we have 26 staff members who, like myself, currently mentor a student. So throughout the month of January, on behalf of you and, and our administrative team, I'm going to go around and give them all a pack of Mentos that we changed to say Mentor. Thank you for being a great mentor. So we'll go around and I'll thank all of our, we have 26 current staff members and 12 retirees and former USD people who still mentor, that we'll make sure that they get a thank you on our behalf for their, their role in the lives of a student as a mentor. And that is it.
All right, board reports. Any board reports this evening? All right, we're ready to move to recess, to exec session. For the purposes of the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the district, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired, there'll be no action following this. Is there a motion to adjourn to closed session for that purpose?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Exum?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Polowski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes.
Vice President Hall?
Yes.
And President Hill?